Welcome to the November 27, 2012 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Menuchyan.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Weaver and the invocation by Archbishop Martorossian.
Please join with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to everyone for which it stands, in the presence of the President.
Please remain standing for the invocation as delivered by his eminence Archbishop Barkev Martorossian, head of the Diocese of Artsakh.
(speaking in Armenian) 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 Jesus, wisdom of the Father, give me the wisdom to think, to speak, and to do what is good in your eyes. Keep me away from evil thoughts, words, and deeds. Have me mercy on your creatures, and especially on me, a great sinner. I'm really glad and honored to be among you in this nice city, in this nice country. And I ask God to bless you, to keep you always in peace, and to give you prosperity and great achievements for your society, for this country, for all of us. God bless you and protect you.
Thank you very much. And I have a proclamation that I would like to read. And it reads as follows. Whereas Archbishop Martorossian, primate of the Artsakh Diocese of the Armenian Apostolic Church, has magnamously represented Artsakh and the Armenian and Christian community, Archbishop Martorossian has traveled the world, is a well-renowned campaigner for many global humanitarian causes. He is recognized as a man of considerable intellect, substance, and humanity, as well as a man of faith. Archbishop Martorossian had demonstrated by virtue and faith that prayer and love can save the life of an individual and of a nation. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim November 27, 2012 as a day of welcome to Archbishop Martorossian. Thank you for your presence, and let's go down.
Mr. Mayor, let me just say a few words after the applause. Several of us have met the Archbishop before. We are so very fortunate and blessed to have him come to Glendale. The Archbishop is a man of God and has literally put his life on the line time and time again as he helped defend the Christian community of Nagorno-Karabakh from the quite radical and violent and bloodthirsty neighbors surrounding Karabakh, namely the Azeris and the Azeri Turks. He kept his faith, and through his dedication to God and to his community, they have been able to maintain the Christian belief, the Armenian language and customs against tremendous odds. So we are looking at a hero of God actually before us. I thank you for permitting us this opportunity, and we're very honored.
Well, the three of us had the opportunity, Mr. Menuchyan, myself, and Mr. Najarian, had the opportunity to visit Nagorno-Karabakh years ago. And as I was telling the Archbishop, we drove on the Armenia Fund Highway at just the right time, late in the afternoon. The hills were red and purple, and just a beautiful, beautiful first introduction to a beautiful, small but beautiful country. And then finally, the capital city was fantastic. Even though it had been bombarded during the war, it was a beautiful capital. So we're very happy. We see him generally once a year when he comes to the Armenia Fund. But it's a pleasure to have you here in our city.
We were also in Sushi, actually.
That's right.
Where they indicated, which was under enemy hands at one point, they were using that city to bombard the capital of Sliponagird of Artsakh. So it was a very interesting trip, and it was very informative for me as well. So welcome to the city.
Thank you. And I invite you all to come to visit Radavakh again and again.
Just to follow up on the Archbishops to visit, actually, there was a beautiful hotel we stayed at, and in fact, the country's ready for tourism. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you so much, sir.
(speaking in Armenian)
Good to meet you. Thank you. Welcome.
Your visit. Wanted to meet you.
The agenda for the November 27, 2012 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Wednesday, November 21, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next?
Next is, at 3A is the agenda preview for the meetings of December 4, 2012.
Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority for December 4. We have no business agenda items. That afternoon, actually that evening, for the Glendale City Council, we have a number of items under consent. Chief of Police, additional equipment for the police department's uninterrupted power supply system. Chief of Police, specialized testing equipment supplies for the police department's DNA lab. Director of Information Services and Fire Chief regarding grant agreement to accept funds for electronic reporting. Fire Chief, this is a contract for fire and EMS dispatching services to the cities of Arcadia, San Marino, and South Pasadena. Director of Information Services and General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, continued maintenance of the EMC storage area network and enterprise backup and recovery systems for the city. Director of Public Works, City of Glendale Measure R and Metro's Call for Projects Funds. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Dietrich Reservoir Backup Pipeline Project in connection with Spec. 3380. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Extension of Contract for Water Service from MWD. For adoption of ordinances, we have three items. Ordinance authorizing execution of the wireless communication facility lease agreement with Singular Wireless. Ordinance authorizing public sale of surplus city-owned properties located at 765 and 749 Glenmore, and 1644, 1648, and 1652 Gladys Drive. And ordinance amending sections of Title 30 relating to science standards in mixed-use zones and creative signs. We also have a number of items under action. Director of Community Development, Montrose Shopping Park Business Improvement District, annual budget. Director of IT and General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, AMI Managed Services. Director of IT and General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is approval of agreements with four separate firms. And Director of Information Services, acquisition of software licenses and maintenance and installation assistance services to manage fiber optic cable assets. And lastly, Director of IT, software maintenance agreements. And we have a motion for that. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Next item at 3B is appointment of Daniel Herman to the Design Review Board Number One, dominated by Councilmember Weaver, on November 6, 2012.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes, a little about Daniel Herman. He's a project manager for ICOM in Los Angeles, architectural practice. He received his Master's of Architecture from Harvard University, Bachelor of Arts from Columbia College, licensed architect in California, for sure. He's a member of the American Institute of Architects, former board member, Los Angeles Forum for Architecture and Urban Design, guest critic, Architectural Department, Woodbury College, USC, Southern California Institute of Architecture, and the Air Center College of Design, plus others that he didn't list. I think he'd be a fitting person to have on the Design Review. I've talked to him, and he's very interested in getting into the architecture of houses in our downtown area. So he'll be a good additions, and I'd like to nominate him.
He does seem a little light on the educational background, Mr. Weaver. I'm not sure.
Harvard and Columbia.
It's a concern, actually, and I want to, is he here? Is he here? I wanted to ask.
We thought he was going to be on last week. I think so.
Because generally, when someone comes from that much of an educational background, they're more theoretic in their approach as opposed to people's approach. So that would concern me. I hope you addressed that with him during the interview.
Oh, of course. I discussed his theoretical background approach as opposed to the practical. Yeah.
Okay. You need a motion? Did you just make the motion?
I made a motion, yeah. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Yeah, I think this is quite a coup, I think, for our DRV process. Not that the other architects and non-architects don't do a good job, because they do, but this gentleman certainly has lots of experience in housing and multifamily, commercial products, et cetera, so it should be good. Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menuchyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
The only comment I have is that I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving. And I have one more little comment, which is that some of you maybe remember last year when my grandmother came to visit here at City Council. I think it was a year ago, it may have been two years ago. And she was also at the State of the City address that I gave last year when I was mayor. Last week, we celebrated her 100th birthday, and she just, it was a wonderful time, and she had a great time seeing all of her cousins and relatives she hadn't seen for a long time. But since she's familiar to some of you in Glendale, I just thought that I'd let you all know that she's going great, and when she has her 105th, I'll bring her back so that she can say hi to everyone again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Menuchyan.
I have a few comments as well. I received a call today, and the council's aware of it. We live in the Chevy Chase Canyon area, and my spouse called saying that there was a large cat-looking thing in the backyard, and dog that was going wild. From all indications are that it could be either a bobcat or a mountain lion, but I just want to let the community know that, you know, be aware of it, and, you know, keep your pets safe, and be careful as you're going up in the mountains. I was also in the mountains over the weekend, as well as on last Thursday, mountain biking, going up Brand, and then going up on Sunday, I went up Audrey Drive. Other than the regular dog, you know, stuff that you see on the trail, once in a while, not as much. You know, Frank, the first thing you do when you go up, you know, after like a long three-and-a-half-mile hike, you go up to the Brand bench on top of the world, and you see everything, and you look down, and you see cigarette butts. So, you know, the first thing you do, I guess, when you go up there after a long hike, is light up a cigarette, and, you know, take in the fresh air that's up there. And I wanted to raise this issue because I did see cigarette butts up there, and it really concerns me. And I want to plead with the community and those who are using the trails that, you know, these mountains, they catch on fire really quickly, and it can cost the city lives, it can cost the city huge amounts of money. If you're going up for a hike or for whatever recreational purposes, don't take cigarettes with you. And wait till you get back home and smoke as much as you want in your own house. But be careful out on the trails. It's fairly dry up there, although it rained a couple of times, but it's still very dry, and nothing gives me more of a scare up there than seeing, you know, cigarette butts. So, and if you do go up there and you see someone smoking, please, please let them know not to. Can we put a sign up there saying absolutely no smoking? Because, you know, it's definitely a huge hazard for the community. Okay.
And it is prohibited.
It is prohibited, yeah.
Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving holiday. We all received a memo from the city manager reminding us that the Rose Parade will be starting, obviously, January 1, and we do have a Rose float to go in the Rose Parade. And I think the memo was, let's think of ways to fill the four seats that are available on the Rose float. I would like to make a motion that we invite Kim Kardashian to be on the Rose float. She has shown an interest in Glendale, and one or two words from Ms. Kardashian are worth hundreds of thousands of advertising dollars. There's three other seats, and I don't know if we need to do this by motion, or it's a consensus, or direction, but she certainly would get us more than five seconds of...
You have to challenge her?
It would, unfortunately. So I would ask that someone support that idea and put it on the agenda for next week.
Mr. ...
No, I won't. For years, I have tried to get riders on the float to come from the different schools in this city, especially the high schools. They're the kids that decorate the float. I know. I've done it 20 years. And every school, every high school should be able to pick a student, whether it's on volunteerism, on academic performance, leadership, whether it's in the school. Make it a project. It's too late for that now. But to pick somebody from the school to represent their school on the float, that creates more community involvement, much better than sticking a council person on the float or a Hollywood movie star. It's the city's float, and we ought to keep it that way.
Well, we can't make any decisions since...
We have a second interested party for...
I would be interested in her purchasing a seat with the kind of, the kind of money that she's made, which would be, which would be donated to, you know, obviously, a Glendale charity, to next year's Rose float. So is there a second to put it on the agenda? No, I don't...
I'd like to remind my colleagues that the mere fact that this young woman's name is associated with the city, even in a deliberation as to whether or not to give her an invitation, would bring us enormous amounts of publicity. I see no harm in someone going along, and at least...
Yeah, let's talk about it. I agree with you, Mr. Najarian. We'll have...
She's probably busy with Mr. West anyway. This is an early morning rise. She may turn us down, but I think it would maybe grab a few headlines that she was invited to sit on our float.
We need to have access Hollywood and all of the entertainment tonight. We need to have them here for the deliberation.
Could be the launching of her campaign.
I'll be the second, or it could be, that's right. She knows I'm not running again. Maybe there's some inspiration there. So, yeah, I'll go with...
No offense to our high schools and their selection process.
I'll go with...
I would even suggest that Mr. Weaver conduct a personal competency interview for her and teach her the wave, should she accept the...
I would simply like to suggest the city manager check with the Pasadena Tournament of Roses on the timeline for producing all the riders to them, because they put out PR relations on all the riders on the float. So please check how much time we have to do this little thing.
All right, well, let's agendaize it for whatever, for next week, and we'll...
It's a fun thing. This is a fun thing we should be talking about, you guys. Let's not be so serious about it.
You'll all come out and help the other 600 people that decorate the float. We start Saturday. 9:00 AM, we start working on the float.
Maybe, actually, maybe she will show up to...
Does she need to check in with anyone?
Anybody can sign.
Or see Mr. Weaver.
Or see me, yeah.
Okay, any other groundbreaking announcements? Mine isn't particularly as eventful as Mr. Najarian. The Americana tree lighting went very well. There were thousands of people in attendance. And the Armenia Fund that I mentioned earlier had their gala fundraiser also very well, very well attended. Anything from the staff? Okay, moving on. Next, please.
Next item on the agenda is the consent items that follow your routine and may be acted upon by one motion.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, there is one other thing, and I did mention this last week. I think council will be very happy to see this. We talked about a promotional film, speaking of promotion, we discussed a promotional film that we had produced for the Eddie Awards, the Economic Development Group in Los Angeles County. And I mentioned that we thought the film was very, very great, very upbeat. I think we can show the long version that has, I think Mr. Ochoa is the lead in the long version. It's three minutes. When I say long, it's three minutes long. So upstairs at GTV6, if you've got that queued, I think it'll be a great time to show it.
Hi, I'm Scott Ochoa, City Manager for the City of Glendale. Utilizing sound planning principles and a robust redevelopment program, Glendale has laid a great foundation for positive economic development, and it's paid off. During the last 12 months, Glendale experienced a rush of new private investment, public improvement, and job creation with growth coming in several different sectors. Like many California cities, we have certainly taken our blows due to the Great Recession, but we're weathering the storm. Glendale's future remains bright, vibrant, and we're moving forward. Take a look at a handful of our recent projects and programs, and I think you'll agree that Glendale is one of the premier communities in Southern California.
Very good, very good. All right, consent items.
Yeah, 11 months.
All that in a little.
Consent items are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the audience or the City Council requesting separate consideration may do so, and by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
You want to pull?
A and B.
Five A and B, okay. Have a motion to pass to remain.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
For C.
Sorry, roll.
Yeah, for C.
I'm sorry, there's something wrong with the microphones. I wasn't able to hear. Councilmembers, you didn't pull any of them, did you?
Yeah, we'll pull five A.
Thank you. A is General Manager of Water and Power regarding funding for...
Wait, wait, wait. Hold on, West.
On C, okay. All right, roll call. Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menuchyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Must be that mustache, right? You just...
No, no, there's something wrong with the microphone. I'm either not able to hear you. If you can speak a little louder, would be appreciated. Thank you. 5A is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding funding for chromium-6 research. 6A1 is resolution authorizing execution of a funding agreement and all related documents, including amendments for funding under the Water Security Clean Drinking Water Coastal and Beach Protection Act of 2002, Proposition 50, for an additional grant amount of $268,000 for the chromium-6 demonstration treatment research studies. At A2 is a resolution authorizing execution of a funding agreement with Water Research Foundation for an amount of $12,500 for funding and fund engineering and scientific support for chromium-6 microfiltration study research effort. A3 is a resolution authorizing execution of a funding agreement for the Water Research Foundation for an amount of $41,000 to fund engineering and scientific support for the chromium-6 resin study research effort. A4 is a motion authorizing execution of amendment to the city's existing professional services agreement with Hazen and Sawyer in amount of $7,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $64,500 to provide engineering and scientific support for the chromium-6 microfiltration study research effort. A5 is a motion authorizing amendment to the city existing professional services agreement with Hazen and Sawyer in amount of $50,500 for new not-to-exceed amount of $106,800 to provide engineering and scientific support for the chromium-6 microfiltration study research effort. And 5A6 is a motion authorizing amendment to the city's existing professional services agreement with Arcadis Consulting Engineers in amount of $61,500 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $264,500 to provide engineering and scientific support for the chromium-6 microfiltration study research effort.
Mr. Menuchyan.
I just wanted to see if you could read all of that stuff. Actually, the chromium-6 issue is an important issue for me, at a minimum, and I wanted staff to give us a briefing as to where we are, when can we start implementing it. And I ask this question every time because it's important for the community. I see there's a number of grants and considerable amount of funding as it relates to research, and we've been doing this since 2003 or '04, as I remember it. And where are we, and how can we proceed? I know at some point, if we don't get additional funds, we will have to stop doing the research. What is the status at this point?
We're making forward progress. This is primarily grant-funded that allows us to be at the forefront of studying how to remove chrome-6 from our groundwater. We are still awaiting a final determination as to what the upper limits will in fact be. These specific studies, Mr. Zern, do you want to give some of the detail?
Yeah, I'm glad to have staff come up and talk about it. This is just the continuing efforts, Mr. Manukian, and I know we were here not too... This is my second time, just in my short term here. But Mr. Ochoa hit the nail on the head. Until the federal and state government issue some final determination on what the limits will be, we really don't get out of the test mode and into the actual production mode so that we all, all of us who are dealing with this issue, then have to meet federal and state mandates.
Any indication at this point? Is there a committee working on it?
There's a lot of committees, and not too long ago, a number of us went to, in front of the Board of Supervisors, who are asking many of the same questions that you're asking now. So there's a lot of angst, if you will, about when we're going to get going on this and when some determinations are going to be made. So our project is nearing what originally had been set out, is nearing the end. We'll continue to look at ways to prolong that if the standards aren't out by then, but we expect that they should be.
Are we treating our groundwater at this time?
Yes.
With some of the results, or are we continuing blending it as opposed to...
It's being blended, but we are treating it as well. So we treat it to a certain point and then blend it, and it's all going into the system.
And in general, what is our threshold at this point? Are we still holding at five and six parts per billion?
I believe that's where we're at, but I'll ask, Mr. Frollick, why don't you just come on up and...
If it's yes, just say yes. It's still in the five to six parts? Okay. That's where we had agreed back then to have it.
The state is 50.
The state is 50, and the federal is 100, I think.
It was much higher, yes.
Which is based on no actual scientific data. It's just a number that they pulled out of their hat.
We certainly have been, as Mr. Ochoa said, at the forefront and contributed quite a bit of scientific data to the process. It's just a matter now of getting somebody to make that final determination so we can move forward.
Okay, and I'll move.
Mr. Najarian.
The Chromium-6 issue is important to all of us, and a few months back, I had a presentation with Dr. Vartanyan, with whom I've been working on this issue several times. He's the physicist from Yerevan Polytechnic Institute. We were trying to put forth a manner and a mechanism in which to remove additional Chromium-6. So we have developed a prototype that I think every household in Glendale should have. This is a retrofitted Brita filter. The business end of it is down here in the yellow portion. And I implore the folks at GWP to give us water, whether it's directly from the ground or whether it's our six parts per billion, and we can do an immediate test through this method, removing it through magnetic forces and Lorentz forces. And there's nothing to lose, and we're spending hundreds and hundreds of thousands on the resin removal and the weak anion. This is ready to go, folks, and I don't think there's any reason why every... This will work with any of those other methods. There's no reason why every household in Glendale can't have one of these at a reasonable cost as a safety net to remove any additional Chromium-6. This is ready to go. All I need is some chrome contaminated water or even are treated at six parts or whatever it is before we blend it and send it to the lab, and if we've got a reduction in chrome, that's a victory. Sometimes it's ideas like this that are outside the box that produce the best results and move the technology forward. So I'm ready to go. Our prototype is ready to go. We've explained the process to you before on the screen, before everyone, and it's, here it is. This is it. This is the home version. The industrial version can be retrofitted to any existing chromium removal project, whether it's the resin, the weak anion base. But let's get moving on it before we dump all this money on these other guys. So please, please, let's take a look at this. This should have been done, you know, months ago. We're moving forward on this, and if it works, great. If it doesn't work, what's the loss? One test at the lab compared to these hundreds of thousands that we're doing? And then we can really say that Glendale is setting the technology bar in Chromium-6 removal. We'll be famous besides Kim Kardashian running for council. So it's right here. It's ready to go. Please, make an appointment with whoever's in charge of this. I know there was issues in getting the contaminated water. It's a controlled substance, whatever all that other stuff is, but we're ready to go. It's right here.
Mr. Najarian, we're trying to set up a meeting with the doctor to talk about that, but yeah, it is a little bit more complicated than just asking for the sample, but we are working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I have...
I'll second.
Roll call.
Council members Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just a personal note. Don Frollick, I did see him sitting there. For information, we were classmates at USC. When I came...
Can I change my vote on this issue?
Oh, he already voted. And when I came to Glendale, I found him working here in Glendale, now retired, enjoying retirement, right?
Yes.
Away. Okay, next.
Yeah, Don spent a lot of time in these chambers in addition to everything else he did at GWP, so it's good to see you again. Okay, five B, please.
Five B is Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Catering Services for Elderly Nutrition Program. B1 is a Motion Awarding a Contract to Morrison Management Specialist in Authorizing Execution of a Four-Year Contract from December 1st, 2012 through November 30th, 2016.
Well, this was a rather short description by our city clerk. Next time, I'll try to pick a longer one. This is also an important service in the community. I think it's important to highlight it while we're voting on it. I also, that's number one. And second, I'm surprised that there were only two respondents to our request for proposals. Is that the norm? Did we advertise it enough in enough outlets for us to get this information?
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members. I'm Maggie Cavari, Community Services Supervisor. I oversee the nutritional meals program. And to answer your question, there are 20, well, there are over 20 county-approved caterers for this program. And of those 20, six proposals were, six bids came in, and two were actually proposals that actually were submitted on time. So we only had two for that reason.
And could you kind of give us a briefing so that the community knows about the services that we provide?
We provide...
I know it was around $3.50 per meal. Do we charge anything to the elderly who are using the services?
We ask for a $2.50 donation per meal. We don't turn anyone away for non-pavement. We have three community centers that provide meals to our seniors, which is a hot nutritional meal at Pacific Park Community Center, Spar Heights Community Center, and the Adult Recreation Center. We also have our Home Delivered Meals Program, which is also included in this proposal. And our Home Delivered Meals Program is based for seniors who are homebound and are elderly and frail. We have case managers that go out to the home and provide that one-on-one home assessment as well as the meal that is delivered to the house once a week, which is seven frozen meals that are delivered.
That's 14,000 meals a year that are delivered.
A year, and over 40,000 hot meals every year.
And the meals are provided during lunchtime?
Yes.
And what are the requirements?
The requirement is that you be 60 years or older.
60 years or older? And you can go in for $2.50, have a hot meal during what hours?
Between 11:00 and 12:30.
11:00 and 12:30 in the centers that you mentioned, the most active being the Adult Recreation Center.
The Adult Recreation Center definitely has. We're actually the only center in all of LA County that serves meals seven days a week, and that is at the Adult Recreation Center. Spar Heights is five days a week, Monday through Friday, and Pacific Park Community Center serves meals Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays.
So Adult Recreation Center is seven days a week?
Seven days a week. Seniors are...
Great program. I think it certainly helps a number of individuals in the community. I think it's well-run, so good job. I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
Next is oral communication. This is the portion reserved for community event announcements. Limit is three minutes. The full five-minute portion, we will revisit at the conclusion of all city business.
Cheryl Davis and Steve Pierce, followed by Paula Devine and Andy Lane.
Well, good evening, council and staff, and we're really thrilled to announce that the Montrose Glendale Christmas Parade is this Saturday, December 1st, and this is the actual official Christmas parade for the city of Glendale. And we appreciate the support the city has given us. We're thrilled. It's not going to rain. We checked all the latest AccuWeathers, and as of about an hour ago, no rain. Rain's going to hold off until Sunday. But Cheryl Davis, who is our new parade coordinator this year, many of you know she is the current president of the Crescent Valley Town Council, so I'm going to let Cheryl address a few things about our parade this year.
I just wanted to thank you all for hopefully being there and invite all of the city, everybody, please come. Council members will be in the parade, and our grand marshals will be the Curiosity Rover Model, the JPL MSL team, and Walter Koenig from the original Star Trek series.
So we have 153 entries, and we're going to try to get this parade to be concluded in two hours. But as all of you know, this is a huge event for the city and for the community of Montrose. We'll have 25,000 people lining the streets of Honolulu, and they just come out and just enjoy it and have a great time. So anyways, we're inviting the entire city of Glendale to please come up to Montrose. Starts at 6:10, and we'll have Santa flying over in a helicopter, and at the end of the parade, he comes back on the Glendale Fire Department to hook and ladder, and it's great fun. And right before Santa comes in, we'll have some wolves that will be howling to the sirens of the fire engine. So, and these are real wolves. So anyways, it's going to be a lot of fun. So welcome and to our event. And again, Saturday, December 1st, Montrose this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Cheryl and Steve for, I mean, this takes a lot of work, an awful lot of work. I think they've been at it for at least 10 months, and it is a great parade. It's really great for kids. I've told all of my neighbors to be sure and go up there. And for adults, all the great restaurants and Montrose. The parking's not that complicated. It's fairly easy to get a parking spot. It's just a wonderful evening, and even in the rain, when it's rained in the past, if there's 25,000 when it's clear, there's 24,000 in the rain. It's just amazing how many people show up for this, so...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would be remiss in not saying that. If you go onto the montrosechristmasparade.com website, you can click onto a link that will have a live internet broadcast of the parade.
I just want, would you please tell the limits? I know where it ends at Verdugo Road. Where does it begin? So people want to avoid the crowd and get to the west side.
It begins at Rosemont, and which becomes Rose Lawn in Honolulu.
To get down there, it's usually a lighter crowd.
Right. And the actual entry is staged from Locust Avenue along Honolulu all the way up to Rosemont. And then the parade starts at Rosemont, as Cheryl just mentioned. So it's a large element of activity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to have Rick Dinger and company doing television?
I'm sorry, say that again, sir.
Rick Dinger?
Rick Dinger and Jay King will be our announcers at the TV area, yes.
Same crew.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Saturday evening in Montrose. Paula Devine and Andy Lane, and next we'll have Ruslan Birakoff.
Mayor Quintero, city council and staff, my name is Paula Devine, and I'm here on behalf of the Safe Family Task Force of Glendale and the Bully Me Not Coalition. And I'm thrilled to announce to everybody that's listening, Senator Carol Lou's Pathways Parent and Youth Summit. It's going to be, it's an extraordinary experience because we have no less than 14 community organizations working on this summit. As I said, it's for parents and youth ages, youth ages eight through 13. The collaboration includes the Rotary, the ARS, Armenian Relief Society, ARC Family Center, Glendale Unified School District, the PTA Council, Safe Place, I could go on, the Commission on the Status of Women, the Sheriff's Department. We are going to have amongst, besides the tracks for the kids and the parents, we're going to have free onsite children's fingerprinting, free breakfast for everyone, free childcare for children ages four to seven. That's so that if parents have older kids and they want to bring them to the conference and they can't, and they have little ones, they can bring them, and Parks and Rec is providing that. Translation will be done in Armenian and in Spanish for all parents through the earphones donated by the Glendale Unified School District. The topics are bullying, cyberbullying, and repercussions from cyberbullying, healthy relationships for children and parents, and drug and alcohol prevention education. The summit will be held at 9:00 AM on Saturday morning. This coming Saturday morning, registration begins at 8:00 AM at the Pacific Community Center. So if anyone out there has children and you'd like to come to this, it's going to be fabulous. You can call 818-409-0400, and Andy's going to tell you a little bit about the speakers.
Hi, I'm Andy Lane from Senator Carol Lou's office, and we have a really exciting list of speakers. We've got the senator, which I think is exciting, the LA County Sheriff's Department, Break the Cycle, the Crescent Valley Drug and Alcohol Coalition, and we have two teen advocates who have experiences with bullying, and they're going to be leading a panel. We also have the Glendale Unified School District. Jerry is actually a youth who wrote, directed, produced, and acted in his own film when he was 10 years old, and it was to raise awareness about strategies youth can employ to prevent bullying. And he will be showing clips from his video and also leading the youth in a discussion about how they can protect themselves and how they can speak out to get to an adult if they need assistance. We also have Savannah Robinson. Oh, and that's all we have.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Savannah Robinson is a singer, and she started a coalition called Savannah's Army in honor of a youth who was killed, or killed herself, committed suicide after being bullied.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ruslan, followed by Dr. Jennifer Earl.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and the staff, good evening. We are in the holiday season now, and this is some of the busiest time for us musicians. And you know Glendale Philharmonic normally would do a holiday concert in January, and many of you visited our concerts. So this year, we will present our Holiday Gala program on December 9th. It's Sunday at 4:00 PM at the First Baptist Church of Glendale, as usual. It will be a big orchestra. In fact, we will have to build additional stage to the altar area of the church. It will be a pretty light and exciting program. We'll have singers. I will perform, too. Our maestra, Michaela Utesan, will be conducting. We will have pieces by Leroy Anderson, you know, Christmas Fantasy, Sleigh Ride, Ball of the Balls. We'll have Radyetsky March. We will have arias from Verdi's operas, including the famous drinking song. We will have a cake in addition to everything. Billis Deli is cooking a huge chocolate cake, which will be rolled out on the stage in the middle of the concert, and then it will be cut, and every guest of ours will get a piece. So please come. Parking is free around the church. Church is located at 209 North Luis Street. It's the corner of Wilson and Luis, and the parking around the church is free. Tickets available online or over the phone. It's glendalephilharmonic.com, glendalearts.org, ticketmicket.com. What else? I think that's pretty much it.
Can you give us the date and time again?
It's Sunday, December 9th, 4:00 PM. And First Baptist Church of Glendale, by the way, church is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year. For, you know, if you have never been there, if someone haven't been there, it's exceedingly interesting, acoustically interesting building that was built a little less than 100 years ago, and the architect was deaf on both ears. Nonetheless, he managed to build a sanctuary with pretty much perfect acoustics. Nonetheless, he managed to build a sanctuary with pretty much perfect acoustic. And church has become an exceedingly popular place for professional, especially classical music concerts now. They are quite booked. This is it, time is over. Please come.
Thank you, thanks. Good to see you again. We haven't seen you for a while, so we're glad you're still working hard and here in Glendale.
Well, we, you know, I, sorry, if I can have just a second. We actually, we're working quite a bit with fundraising. We've just been awarded grant from LA Arts and Cultural Commission. And, you know, orchestra is just one of the projects of Positive Motion's Foundation. And Positive Motion's Foundation has been developing quite rapidly. In fact, there are a few other projects has been established, including Los Angeles Choral Quartet, which happens to be exceedingly popular project right now, not only in LA, but also in California. And we are starting Music for Kids Sick with Cancer project. In fact, we'll be doing a performance on December 6th in Sidovsianic Hospital for the kids who survived their cancer treatments. So we are actually pretty excited.
Thank you very much, Ruslan. Okay, Dr. Jennifer Earl, followed by Natalie Camorro.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Councilmember Weaver, I will gladly identify a student from Hoover High School. I'm the principal of Hoover High School, and for any, you know, event like that, we'd be happy to choose a wonderful Hoover senior to do something like that. I am here for two purposes, serving two roles this evening, as the principal of Hoover and the first ever honorary chair of the 55th Tour of Homes that supports Hoover seniors. From this tour of homes, we provide seniors with scholarships. It is $25 at the door. You can see hovertourofhomes.org is the place you can get tickets in advance. We have four homes this year up behind Hoover in the hills. There are many community members involved beyond parents, so we're really excited. It's the first time we've ever had this big of a group planning the event. The day you get to tour the homes, they're all decorated for the holidays. There's tea, live music from my orchestra and our choirs, and a small shop to maybe do some holiday shopping as well. So it's a full day of entertainment. $25 in advance and $30 at the door. So we'd love to have you as our guests. Happy holidays.
Get as many students out, try to beat Glendale High School.
We will.
Terms of workers.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Jennifer Earl.
How'd you want to Glendale?
Yeah, I went to Glendale. She's Hoover now.
Why do you want to beat Glendale? Your alma mater?
Yes.
Dr. Earl here?
No, that was Dr. Earl.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Natalie Camorro, Essencia.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Quintero and council members and staff. I'm Natalie Camorro, Executive Director of Essencia. And one more thing that's happening this Saturday, December 1st, is the opening of the Glendale Winter Shelter Program. It will be 80 beds at the Armory at 220 East Colorado Boulevard. And Essencia will be operating the program for the first time this year, so we're very excited about that. I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce our program director, Mary Leisure, and our shelter manager, Ron Seresedes. And they will be leading a staff for the next three months. The program runs until March 1st. What I wanted the public also to know is there's information on our website at www.essenciac.org. And if there are other questions, they can call during the day to 818-246-7900. And we brought some flyers here, and I didn't bring it for you to post, unfortunately. I don't know if this, this isn't going to really show up very well. But we're circulating these flyers for folks who know people who are staying on the streets right now, who need shelter, to come in and get help from us. So if there are any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Oh, I did want to also point out, this is for adults only. There's a separate program for families, run through the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. So if families cannot get into our program at Essencia, we'll refer them through the 211 system.
What are the requirements for being able to get help?
To, you have to be homeless, have to be well behaved.
Is there an age limit when you say?
Adults, adults. We will be referring youth to other programs. To the extent we get an unaccompanied youth, they'll be referred to another program. And then families with children will also be referred elsewhere.
Have to be Glendale residents or a specific residency? I know when you're homeless, you don't have residence, but...
They're not required. We do, we're working very closely also with the city of Burbank, and we are looking to prioritize 20 of the 80 beds for residents in Burbank, and we're making arrangements for outreach and transportation there. But other than that, we're not doing any kind of transportation route outside the city. It's really, it is a first come, first served program, however, so the issue will be that we can only accommodate 80 people. Last year you had 50, and then previously it'd been 150 people.
And do you do any kind of outreach to?
Yes, we do. We do street outreach. We'll be also communicating with our partner agencies. In fact, I sent an announcement out to them today. And we hired a third outreach worker with funding from the city of Burbank. So we'll be doing Burbank, outreach in Burbank and here. And then also we're meeting with city staff on Thursday.
You anticipate a great number of individuals who will need the service this year? Last year we had 50, you said?
Last year it was limited to 50. It was a little more restrictive program than we're operating this year.
Under served the homeless community?
Well, it was, it was a little more limited because you had more stringent criteria for the program last year. So this program is a little more open. Well, we, we think that at the beginning of the month, some people will have money and they may go stay in a motel to start with, but when they run out of the money, they're going to need the shelter. It's also not going to be raining on Saturday. The weather will also influence the number of people seeking shelter.
And what are the hours that people can come check?
Oh, good, good point. We are opening the shelter at 6:00 PM. People will be allowed to line up no earlier than 5:00 PM. And then they will be asked to leave at 6:30 in the morning. Now, Essencia will be working with people to plan their morning, so we're looking to have more constructive activities for people during the day, so they're not just hanging around.
Okay, so 6:30 in the morning, they have to leave?
Yes. Essencia's access center opens at 7:00, so we'll be ready to serve people at that hour.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Clark.
Underaction items at 8A is a general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding wireless communication facility lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for three consecutive five-year terms for the city-owned property located at 827 Airway. 8A1 is an ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. Currently, we have on a month-to-month lease AT&amp;T renting or leasing space for wireless installation at Airway. We have negotiated with them to put together a, at maximum, 15-year lease made up of three five-year terms. The initial base rent would jump from $32.44 a month to $3,800 a month. And then at the commencement of each extension, each five-year extension, that rate would go up by $400 to $42 to $46, ultimately netting a very significant increase over what it is that we are realizing today. With that, I'm sure Mr. Zern can answer any specific questions you may have.
My question is whether you have negotiated the very maximum amount of dollars possible, and cents, dollars and cents.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we feel very confident that we have negotiated a good deal for the city. And just to add one other, one other item, that 15 years looks a little ominous, but we maintain 180-day notification, both sides, for termination of the agreement, and that commences at any point. It can commence within the first year, if need be, if either party feels that for any reason they need to extract themselves from this deal. So, yeah, we think it's a very good deal, Mr. Mayor.
And it's something like 340 square feet?
319 square feet.
So we're getting well over $10 a square foot of unimproved.
Correct. And land that we don't have currently any plans to use.
Glad to introduce the ordinance at 8A1.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. Next, please.
At 8B is a city clerk regarding calling for, if calling for and giving notice of the general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2013. B1 is a resolution consenting to consolidating the general municipal election with the Glendale Unified School District and Glendale Community College District. B2 is a resolution calling for a general municipal election and establishing a stipend for services. B3 is a resolution requesting service of registrar of voters. B4 is a resolution adopting a policy regarding candidates' costs for the April 2nd, 2013 general municipal election.
Mr. Ochoa.
This is, thank you. This is just our routine action that we must make. There is a certain number of days prior to the election that we have to call for the election. I know that there is an item still pending about charter amendments, but this will not affect that. However, we do have to call for the consolidation of the elections with the school district and the college district in enough time to be able to do that. So that's what this is.
Okay, do I have a?
Move 8B, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
We get top billing on the ballots?
There, yes. The council actually, election will be the first, however, the alphabetical order will not be determined until the Secretary of State does a random drawing.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
Next item at 8C is Director of Human Resources regarding adoption of classification and compensation resolution for employees of the city of Glendale. C1 is a resolution authorizing the establishment of executive classification title and compensation, Chief Information Officer.
Introduce this item, sir. If you have any questions for HR Director Matt Doyle, please feel free. Essentially, with the planned retirement of our current Information Services Department Director Ed Fraga effective in January, we are looking at this opportunity to more accurately reflect what the market is, both in terms of title of position as well as salary, in effect to the surrounding cities that we compete with. Thus, we are proposing that we change the title from Information Services Director to Chief Information Officer, and we adjust the range from what it is today to $13,879 per month. And at this point, again, we can answer any questions you might have.
I have a question. I understand we're changing the title of Director of Information Services to Chief Information Officer. Are we doing away with the Director of Information Services, so we're not going to have two, two positions?
That's correct, sir.
And are the salary commensurate with the Director of Information Services, or is it higher?
It's higher than the current Director of Information Services. That's no reflection on certainly on Mr. Fraga. It's simply a consideration that, again, reflects where we are based on the salary surveys for other like cities with the same type of apparatus that Glendale has.
And why not keep the old title and keep the old salary?
Because we're well below with what the market is today. When you look even just in our, in our immediate neck of the woods from Burbank and Pasadena, we are double digits below what the market is bearing out. With the most recent recruitment process in Pasadena, we aren't even going as high as what that salary is. We are far outstripped. But understanding that we still have to keep the salary structure in alignment with all of our other execs, and thus flowing to the mid-managers, to the supervisors, and to the line employees, I think we would, we would not be poorly served by increasing it further, but it has to fit with what the rest of the organization can bear.
Right. That is, that is the point I wanted to make as well, in terms of the salary, whether other organizations were paying considerably higher. And when I looked at the ranges, both in the private and the public sectors, it is, it is in the lower, lower third of the range that we're offering compared to private, private companies. But your last statement in terms of what the organization can bear is the most important one. And commensurate with the other executives, if it's within that range, I'm okay with it.
It is, and I can tell you that our hope and expectation is that we certainly are not going to start someone at top step. We would stop at...
And usually we start someone in the middle, or hopefully at a lower spectrum of the salary to begin with.
That would be our, our goal, pending the recruitment that we do and the candidates that we get.
All right.
Move 8C1.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
8D is City Attorney, continued from November 13th meeting regarding language for proposed charter amendments ballot initiatives. D1 is a resolution authorizing placing on the ballot the question of amending the charter conversion of the city treasurer position from elected to appointed. D2 is a resolution authorizing placing on the ballot the question of amending charter fund structure compliance with GAAP and GWP transfer. D3 is resolution authorizing placing on the ballot the question of amending charter account, accounting, and finance eliminating obsolete language. At D4 is a resolution calling for arguments for and against proposed charter amendments for the ballot.
Mr. Mayor, I propose to take these items separately. I'll roll.
Okay. I have a que, well, go ahead.
Let me just briefly summarize what was before you. After our last discussion on the 13th, we brought back separate resolutions relating to the three subject areas. One, with respect to the treasurer. There are different alternatives with relation to minimum qualifications and the duties of the city treasurer, if that position was converted to appointed, but the direction from the council from the last meeting was that the, the position would be a department head level, executive level position, appointed by the city manager at will. The duties, some duties could be assigned to other, other department heads or deputies of the city manager, but the, the investment function would have to at all times retain, be retained with the city treasurer. And then the minimum duties would be as established, there was a couple of discussion points. The proposed resolution would be that the minimum duties would be as established in the government code for county treasurers. And those have certain, those duties are, excuse me, minimum qualifications are outlined in the staff report, but essentially it requires a certain level of experience, certain educational background, certain certificates, or some combination of those. And so that's, that was, the resolution's been prepared to, with that prior direction in mind. Charter Amendment B has to do with the fund structure for both the general fund and, and GWP, and basically rewrites those that they're consistent with generally accepted accounting principles, so that any perceived conflict is addressed through the charter amendment. And in addition, confirms the city's interpretation and practice that the, the calculation of the transfer is based upon percentage of operating revenues and not surplus revenues. And so that, that's the basis for Charter Amendment B, and then Charter Amendment C...
No, let's stick with charter, let's stick with first.
Okay.
Before we get into the second, so we don't confuse the...
So, so, right, so I'm through with A, which has to do with the treasurer. Again, it would be, the proposed resolution would be to convert that to an appointed position, appointed by the city manager. It would be a department head level position at will, and then the duties would be as established by the government code.
Okay, so my first question, I understand that the city manager could not assign the investment duties to the Director of Finance or other...
As written, that's correct.
Right. The investment duties would continue to reside within the treasurer, but as he see fit, management-wise, he could assign some of the other tasks that the city treasurer does.
Correct.
And why don't you let the public know what some of those other duties are that the...
Maybe I can have either Ms. Farpetin or Sabruk come up. But essentially, it's, there's a cash handling function, the banking function.
Banking, daily reconciliation.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's the banking function in, in the investment function essentially that the city treasurer does. And the investment function would remain with the city treasurer, but other banking duties and other accounting would reside, potentially reside with a different individual or a deputy.
Or continue to serve.
Or stay with the treasurer.
Stay with the treasurer, right.
Okay, about that. Then, in terms of the code, the government code.
Sure, it's on paper.
I have a long list, so I'm going to read someone who would be appointed to this position, someone who would apply for the position and go through civil service, et cetera, through all, just like any director or any employee for that matter that applies for jobs in the city of Glendale. Some of the criteria for an appointed treasurer would be, number one, that the person has served in a senior financial management position in a county, city, or other public agency... agency, dealing with similar financial responsibilities for a continued period of not less than three years, so at least three years' experience, and then that the person possess a valid baccalaureate, master's, or doctoral degree from an accredited college or university in any of the following major fields: business administration, public administration, economics, finance, accounting, or related field, with a minimum of 16 college semester units or their equivalent in accounting, auditing, or finance. Number three, the person could possess a valid certificate issued by the California Board of Accountancy showing that the person is and is permitted to be certified as a person to practice as a certified public accountant. Number four, the person possesses a valid charter by the Institute of Chartered Financial Analysts showing the person to be designated a chartered financial analyst, once again with minimum 16 college units. Or five, the person possesses a valid certificate issued by the Treasury Management Association showing the person to be designated a certified cash manager with a minimum of 16 college units or their equivalent in accounting, auditing, or finance. So those are one of the five.
Is it a valid driver's license?
And a valid driver's license. Actually, we don't mention convicted of a felony, but I don't know where that stands constitutionally. Okay, so just wanted to read that into the record. I think that's the only questions I have. Oh, no, I have one more. On the resolution except itself, city manager may assign certain duties, accept the duty to direct the investment of the city's idle funds to other deputies. Can't that be reworded?
It could be, but I mean essentially, it's saying that he can direct other -- do the banking function to other officers, employees, but not the duty investment funds.
Yeah, it doesn't read very clearly. May assign other duties, accept the duty to direct the investment of the city's idle funds to other deputies. I'd like to have that kind of massaged a little bit.
Just the wording.
Hold on.
And that's my only questions and comments. Any other questions or comments?
Want us to work this -- we can all do it tonight. We can work this up while we're going through the other charter amendments.
Thinking the wording at the end and putting it up.
Right.
I'll seren.
Okay, we'll work it up, and then Lucy will read it back into the record.
Okay.
Would you like me to move on?
All right, next, please.
Okay, so again, Charter Amendment B has to do with the fund structure for general fund and GWP, to make those funds and the counting for those funds consistent with generally accepted accounting principles, had that stated specifically in the charter. It would result in the elimination of many of the funds that are currently mandated by the charter, and simply in the case of the general fund, there would be one general fund, and all the different -- all the accountings of the city's general fund would occur through that general fund, and the same with GWP. And then in addition, as I mentioned, it would address the issue very specifically, remove any ambiguity with respect to the issue of the calculation, the basis for the calculation of the GWP transfer.
I have -- there was an issue that was raised today. I met Mr. Zavos, I'm the city attorney today, and there was an issue that was raised that I personally did not have an answer to, and I -- a statement was made by the city attorney that the Director of Finance has looked into this issue, and the issue is, I'm sure that you've mentioned it before, but I just want to refresh my memory as it relates to this item, is a transfer of reserve funds or surplus funds to the operating side of the statement, of the income statement, or the budget. It seems to me that you have stated that you can transfer it from reserve fund to reserve fund, but you can't transfer it from the reserve fund to an expenditure fund. Is that correct? Otherwise, we would -- when they audit the statements, that would be problematic? I was not aware of that, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, let me try and clarify. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the way the charter reads now is really inconsistent. It's the reserve fund, the reserve fund, and keep in mind, again, inconsistent with my interpretation of GAAP and governmental accounting standards. The way the charter reads is we have a surplus fund, revenue funds, reserve funds, you know, in a sense, we have different pieces that make up various funds. For example, the -- in GWP, we've got the depreciation fund, which we don't necessarily need. The revenue fund for both, there's one for electric, one for water, serves as the income statement, and the reserve fund serves as the balance sheet.
I understand all of that. Can you -- but can you, by GAAP and GAAS, can you transfer from the reserve fund to the expenditures?
No.
That's what I want to --
In GAASB--
Where does it state that?
Because I was looking at-- GAASB 34 states in a nonreciprocal transfer, or a nonreciprocal interfund transfer, which is basically GWP sending money over. It has to be treated as a non-operating expense. So the fact that we budget for it on the income statement through the budget process to be an expense out of the utility into the general fund, it's then recorded as a revenue. So you can't just, you know, deviate one--
That's the crux of the argument, actually, about whether to transfer it through the surplus or through the operating revenues. And that's where the problem lies, actually, as we're trying to address here. But I will look that up in GAASB 34. I wasn't aware of that. Is it the general fund reserve and the appropriations and the revenues for the general fund, isn't that all one fund, considered one fund, basically, whether it's reserves, appropriations, or revenue?
The way we treat it is, it is, but in the charter, we have multiple funds that we combine to report. The general fund, we do the same for both electric and water. Contrary to what we do with, say, the sewer fund, which is another enterprise fund, all the operations of the sewer fund are contained within one fund. Electric and water have all these charter mandated pieces of what I would call a current day fund, which we then put together to report on in the CAFER.
But my question is, whether it's general fund revenues, general fund appropriations, or general fund reserves, they're all general fund. They're all considered in one basket called general fund and different pieces of the same fund?
Exactly.
Okay. I just want to clarify that as well.
Questions or comments? I have two--
What about the third piece?
Well, let me ask another one. Has this been clarified with the auditors as well? Is that their approach as well, or is it just your interpretation? Do they address this issue during their annual audit?
No, I have never discussed it with them. They don't typically interpret what the charter has. We've done what we have, you know, do to comply with the charter for many, many years.
Not the charter. Here, we're cleaning up GAAP and GWP transfers. We're cleaning up the charter to reflect what is better accounting procedures, basically, or correct accounting procedures as is reflected today with the accounting principles. Is that addressed by the auditors at any point in time during their audits?
No.
No, because, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, had we reported it in the CAFER as it is dictated in the charter, it would likely be addressed by the auditors in an opinion letter. But because we do it according to GAAP, it's not.
Okay.
Counting courses have you taken?
I'm telling you what, more than I care to--
Okay. Time in.
The third item is real simple.
It was, again, just cleaning up some really obsolete provisions related to, for example, petty cash, also providing some additional flexibility in the pricing and selection of bonds, you know, the purchase of bonds or the sale of bonds. So to give the city manager flexibility to do negotiated bond sales as opposed to just competitive bid. So those types of cleanups, changes are in that third item. So with that, those are the three items for consideration.
And on the issue of negotiating bonds, how would there be sort of an overview of that process if it's not an RFP?
Well, again, it -- 31.
We will come back to--
Yeah.
Bring your microphone. If, when we come to council for a bond issue, whenever that may be, council, looking at the market and considering staff recommendation, could say, no, we want to negotiate this, or no, we want to go to RFP. So that would play out in real time at the appropriate time.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, I have two speaker cards. Herbert Mulano followed by Harry Zavos.
I have a PowerPoint. Mayor Quintero, may I have three minutes for item 2D and three minutes for item 8?
Yeah, why not, Mr. Mulano?
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. The -- I will give you a brief background. Mayor Quintero, members of the city council and staff, my name is Herbert Mulano. I have actually gone back to take a look at the financial reports and the budgets that you find today in the reserve section of the Glendale Public Library. I took a look at the 1970 report, the 1985, the 1990, and up to 1995, and there's something particular consistent concerning the language. The general reserve fund is used consistently throughout all of those reports, and the surplus fund is addressed, including the surplus fund is addressed as a separate item, not part of the operational. You get a net, and then you get the transfer below that. Throughout all of these years, the references are made on all of these budgets concerning addressing how that transfer and how that surplus is calculated. And I tell you, that is significantly different from the way that has been practiced for the last 11 years. So I'd like to address the following, that the proposed charter amendment is not simply a change in the language, but is a material change in its interpretation, and it would allow the council to do things that the current charter does not allow you to do. So I want to present these particular PowerPoints. The proposed 2013 charter amendment to legalize prohibited transfers from the Glendale Water and Power, it was established in 1941 as a city charter amendment. Next, I'm sorry. The charter authorization of 1941, it permits the transfers to the general reserve fund for the first time. It established the Glendale Water and Power surplus fund, and it reads, "At the end of each fiscal year, an amount equal to 25% of the operating revenues of the Department of Glendale Water and Power for such year shall be transferred from said Glendale Water and Power surplus fund to the general reserve fund." And those two terms are significantly critical in its interpretation, but it's only one item of interest. There's more. It establishes a general budget fund. It forbids the transfer from the Department of Glendale Water and Power, and this is in I read. "A fund to be known as the general budget fund is hereby created. All receipts from the general tax levy, licenses, fines, permits, interest on bank deposits, and other receipts, except those from the Department of Glendale Water and Power, shall be credited to this fund." It couldn't be more clear than that, and this is the item that hasn't been presented. The 1941 city council resolution provided the following reasoning for this change, whereas it is the opinion of the city, of the council, that a reasonable portion of the surplus fund, of the surplus of the public service department should be used for the payment of the cost of carrying on the general government, whereas Lester S. Ready, the consulting engineer, having been employed by the council to study and analyze the financial condition of said department and to recommend to said council that if any portion, if any portion of the surplus of said department should be so used, be it resolved, that if the amendment is adopted, there shall be transfer annually from the public service surplus fund to the general reserve fund, a maximum amount equal to 12% of the annual operating revenues of public service department.
Is this the next three minutes?
During the next three minutes.
Thank you. So here is the -- so within the packet and within that resolution, there are financial statements. I read the financial statements from 1940, 1941. Here are some of the items. The operating revenues at the time were $2 million, a little bit of that, and the transfer was 12%. Now, look at the amount of the surplus after expenses. It was $683,000. We don't have that luxury today. Back then, it was incredibly significant. It was 31% of revenues. In the words of consultant Ready, "It was a balance available for rate reductions, payment to the city, and surplus funds." They were very prudent in the way they were doing this calculation. The bottom one that you should know is the following, is that the surplus was so great that limiting to 25% of the revenues was a fairly prudent way of approaching it. It was not authorizing it, it was setting a limit because of the significant size of that surplus fund. So the net transfer at the time was actually $178,000. The reason for that is because there were supposed to be payments back from the city's general fund to the Glendale Water and Power, and they're very -- and they're stipulated there. So basically, we were spending at the time, 1941, 26% of the surplus. The surplus was expected to build up to $1,183,000 or nearly 54% of revenues by 1945. They were expecting the surplus to increase significantly, and because the surplus was so large, they were saying, look, we're going to limit it to 25% of the revenues. Because the surplus was 31% of revenues, prudent fiscal practices required that not all the surplus be transferred. The city council approved a net transfer of 26% of the surplus. So the intent of the 2013 amendment is to eliminate the current charter's express prohibition that the transfers go to the general budget fund, to allow an increase of up to 25% of revenues from the electrical fund, or roughly $50 million from the current transfer of $21 million. To avoid dealing with the critical pension reform of current employees and to support additional bond and debt for capital improvements. The items from 1941, as you go through the years, is that they were incredibly prudent, putting money aside for capital improvements, making sure that you did not overspend. But we have overspent and taken so much money from the utility that the $200 million needed for water capital improvements and $300 million needed for electrical improvements are beyond any kind of resemblance to any type of surplus that we could possibly have. They were incredibly prudent, and that prudent approach should be consistent in this charter amendment if you approve it. Thank you very much.
Before I begin, Mr. Mayor, can I address a question to the city attorney? I came to speak on this item under the assumption, because I have a different view as to what the charter currently allows in the city attorney, I came on the assumption that for me to go into the reasons for my position was beyond the narrow scope of this agenda item, which addresses putting the initiative on the ballot. Am I correct or incorrect that it's beyond that scope?
I think because you have a disagreement with our position, I think you can address it as it relates to these particular charters. Is that your question? Can you address your reasons for disagreement?
Well, I'll indicate why. I had intended to address the basis for my position as opposed to the city attorney's office's position in oral communication, and here I was simply going to address the narrow issue of whether the initiative should be put on the ballot.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you can address the issue at this point. In fact, it's on the agenda, and I would think you have to do it during this portion of the meeting.
Right. Well, then, could I have the same consideration that Mr. Mulano had in terms of?
Mr. -- hey, Clark, give him five minutes.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. On November 12th, the Glendale news press reported that the city discovered documents surrounding the original charter amendment that allowed the public services department, GWP's name in 1941, to transfer funds for use by the general government, and that those documents show the intent behind the amendment. The news press also reported that the city officials asserted that the intent confirms the city's current practice of taking, and I quote, "A percent directly from the utility's operating revenue and transferring it to the general fund that pays for general public services." But if you read-- But if you read those documents that include the city's council's resolution, putting the amendment on the ballot, and the Ready Report, which was a basis for the amendment, they tell a different story. In its first two clauses, the resolution states explicitly that the transfers are to come from a portion of the utility's surplus, not from operating revenues, but from surplus, and not the entire surplus, but a portion of the surplus. Let me refer to an additional resolution clause regarding the effect of the amendment. Quote, "There shall be transferred from the Public Service Surplus Fund, not the operating revenues, but surplus, to the General Reserve Fund, a maximum amount equal to 12% of the operating revenues of the Public Service Department." If the transfer is from surplus, why the reference to 12% of the operating expenses? Figures from the Ready Report show that 12% of operating revenues was equal to approximately $263,000 in 1941 dollars. But it also shows that after all utility needs were met, including capital requirements, there was a surplus left in 1941, or in the words of the Ready Report, I quote, "A balance available for rate reduction, payment to city, and surplus funds of over $648,000, 2.6 times the 12%. By the next year, the surplus for that year was projected to be over $990,000, or 3.7 times the 12%. By 1950, the projected surplus for that year was almost $1.6 million." After taking care of all the utility's needs, the projected 1940 surpluses were great enough so that a portion was available for rate reduction, for retained surplus, and for transfer to a city fund. We heard earlier, when I quoted from the resolution, "A portion, a portion of the surplus" was to be transferred to the city's general reserve fund, where it could help the city's finances. But what portion? How much could be transferred? The resolution, as well as the current charter, gives the answer. In 1941, the answer was, and I quote from the resolution, "A maximum amount equal to 12% of the annual operating revenues of the utility." The intent to transfer so as to help with the general government finances through the vehicle of the general reserve fund is clear, but not at the expense of the utility. The transfer was to come out of surplus leftover after all utility needs were met, and the 12% merely capped the maximum portion of the surplus that could be transferred. And I have not seen one charter provision, nor has one been pointed out to me, that authorizes any transfer from the utility, directly from the utility's revenue funds, to the general fund. Now, I have no problem with the initiative being put on the ballot, but your resolution charges the city attorney with making the, drafting impartial analysis, and he's taken one of those positions different than mine. Mine is that, yes, there should be a transfer. The charter requires that the transfer be out of surplus. The city attorney's position is, no, the transfer is directly from revenue funds. Now, if this council directs the city attorney in his impartial analysis to indicate there are these two different positions regarding the legality of transfers under the current charter, and if he makes clear to the voting public that this, may I just conclude?
That's your thought.
And makes clear that this charter amendment would resolve that conflict in favor of the position that it comes out of operating revenues, I have no difficulty with the initiative being put on the ballot. I believe, under our form of government, that people decide what the charter should say, so long as they are adequately informed as to the implications of their vote. Okay, that's my final card. Mr. Ochoa.
If the council pleases, we can review some of this, despite the fact that it's been asked and answered so many times that it's difficult to try to reframe the argument for and against in a way that adds something new. To hear the discussion, as I understand it now, as it's evolved somewhat, is to the point that we are arguing there's a disagreement over which pocket to take the same dollar out of. And because there is this discussion, this uncertainty, that the city attorney and I both feel that based on the documentation that was uncovered through the city clerk's office, that the intent of the framers of our charter eliminate a great deal of that uncertainty and that the cloud that has been repeatedly attempted to be cast over this issue, it makes it, I think, confusing for folks at home trying to sift through what is real and what is not. At the end of the day, what you heard tonight was that now there is no dispute, apparently, that funds may be paid to the city for purposes of city administration. You're hearing that, really, the issue here is the size of that surplus, because it's supposed to be taken from the surplus, although we acknowledge now and agree, I think, on all sides, that the intent was to take it from operating revenues. Well, operating revenues are those gross revenues of the utility. So do you, at what point do you take it? And to this notion, this argument, this point about the health of the utility, well, it wasn't that long ago that the utility had a reserve fund of $150 million. Did the city council at that point decide to take the maximum 25% of operating revenues? No, you didn't. And I don't know that any council necessarily would. If it's about determining what the size of the revenue is, this idea of form over substance really comes into focus, because if Mr. Zern were to come back and say, "Here is what the proposed budget is for the utility, and it happens to be $21 million less than what the gross revenues are, and that is the surplus, and that which then may be transferred over to the city," it's the same difference. It's six and one-half dozen. And all of the pronouncements, and all the theorizing, and all of the argument don't change that fact. We, at this point, have been over this, and I don't want to belabor the point unless the city attorney wants to cover anything that I am missing, but this notion that the charter prohibited, I think you heard the first speaker, the charter prohibited, that we are seeking to eliminate the prohibitions? No, we're seeking to actually make clear that which is stated, but is somewhat clouded by some of the definitions. We feel, though, when you look at all the contextual arguments and all the contextual documents, that it is clearly in favor of what the opinion is of the city. We talk about the issue of allowing for the transfer, and where does that come from? As I say, you know, we adopt a budget, that budget takes into account personnel, O and M, purchasing of power, purchasing of water, and capital and infrastructure. And if we're going to base this argument based on the size of the surplus, well, I'm sorry, again, I just, I beg to differ, because you, as the policymakers for the utility, get to decide on behalf of the community what the funding levels for the respective elements of the utility are going to be. This notion of going to allow an increase in the size of the transfer, that has been discussed and refuted by every member of this council and rejected on its face. You are not looking to increase the size of the transfer. In fact, you have decreased the transfer this year, and you're looking to float that down over the coming subsequent years. At the end of the day, we have a charter that is drafted in a time that does not reflect the current way that we do business. We are endeavoring to put before the voters an argument that says we should make the charter consistent with the way that government business is done today. We think, at this point, we have provided all of the context to show that there's no nefarious theorizing, that there is no, there's no voodoo to any of this. We just want to make clear that which was intended some 70 years ago. Nothing more and nothing less. I know, Mike, if there's anything.
You know, as Mr. Ochoa said, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we tried to address this pretty thoroughly at the last discussion, just a couple of points. The first speaker mentioned that 1941, the utilities, that the charter requires that you only transfer a percentage of net revenues, and that 1941, when this charter amendment was passed, the utility transferred 26% of net revenues. Well, if they did, then they were violating the charter at the outset. So again, I believe that it was based on the language in the resolution that we presented last week, that the issue of the calculation of the amount of the transfer has to be based on annual operating revenues. It says in an amount equal to 12% then, 25% annual revenues. There's been no discussion really about how, what that language means, other than to go back to, well, it has to come out of a different, a different source of funds. And from our view, we can't see a court saying, "Well, if it's very clear, it's got to be this percentage." The fact that you're doing it from a different, from a different fund is unconstitutional. The other point I would point out, or violates the charter, the other thing I would point out is that if we were to do the counting the way that's been suggested, then we'd be, then we'd be getting qualified opinion letter from auditor, which, one, is bad, two, arguably violates the charter itself, because we've got this obligation to do this annual audit, and presumably, you've got to either comply or do something to then fix your accounting practice, just to ensure that you're not getting those qualified opinion letters. So again, we feel that the language in the charter itself and the legislative history backs up the view that it had to be based on operating revenues. Most importantly, that this was viewed as a payment in lieu of taxes that the utility would pay if it were a private concern. That hasn't been addressed. I think it's very clear that that's, and that's mainly why many public utilities have that particular transfer in some form or another, because it's acknowledging that the city is entitled to some taxation, some sort of revenue as a taxation source from the utility. So...
And I would only add one thing on to it, because you also heard the boogeyman of public sector salaries and benefits thrown out yet again, when in fact, what we have shown the council and the community, going back this spring with the adoption of the budget, that without a doubt, Glendale pays a larger, employees in Glendale pay a larger share of the cost of their unemployment than any other employees in our region, and for my money, up and down the state of California. And our salaries, as we point out, we were talking about the CIO position, are still either at or well below what the market is for what those salaries are. You have, and we have trimmed the workforce to levels that have been unprecedented over the last 15 years. So if you know that you are cost-effective and cost-efficient, we're managing and tracking performance to make sure that we are still delivering on that value proposition, and we are cleaning up language that is at best, at best unclear, then I think the idea of putting this before the voters as, and characterizing it as what it is, cleanup of existing language, is entirely appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to take... Yeah, I was just going to comment that it's clear to me on this issue that it was the intent of the charter that there be a transfer, and if you look at the historical records of cities in Southern California, that's why they started utility companies themselves and didn't turn to Edison or other investor-type of utilities. They wanted to have control over their own destiny in terms of the infrastructure, and obviously, to make money from an enterprise. This is an enterprise, GWP, that for the past 70-plus years has been transferring money to the general fund. City council has done it for 70-plus years, and I just don't see why, you know, we continue to have this same, the same comments, the same comments. To me, GWP is no different from parks and recreation or public works or anything else. This is a enterprise that makes money for the city, and it's to be shared with the other departments to help run the city of Glendale.
In lieu of other taxes.
Right, in lieu of other taxes or... It's weird.
We want to take these separate...
Yeah, let's take it separate.
Before you make the motion, yeah, given the mayor's concern, our recommendation on 8C1 is to revise the second, be it further resolved, so it reads, "Be it further resolved that the city treasurer shall serve as a department director, and the city manager may assign certain duties of the city treasurer to other deputies of director of finance, except the duty to direct the investment of the city's auto funds," semicolon, and then create a new, "be it further resolved," and it would read, "Be it further resolved that the minimum qualifications of the city treasurer shall be made in the charter by reference to the government code."
And that is 8D1, correct?
Oh, sorry, yes, 8D1, thank you.
I'll move. 8D1.
I have a second.
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. I want to make a comment regarding 2, actually. I looked up GASB 34, the nonreciprocal interfund activity. It doesn't reflect anything regarding, now, I don't make that interpretation, nontransfer of funds from reserves to the expenditures. However, I believe that this item has been discussed to the end at this point, and it's time for the community to decide where they want to go with this item. And I think both sides of the argument can, of course, present arguments, both in the pamphlet that is going to be provided, and they can run a campaign, just like any other campaign, clarifying their position and making their case to the community. I think it's time that we put this item to rest, and we give the community a chance to speak on this issue. So I will support the resolution at 8D2 in placing this item on the ballot, and I would, and I would expect that, and I would hope that the arguments for an impartial briefing or impartial analysis in the ballot will actually be an impartial analysis to the issues that are presented and address the issues on both sides of this argument. So that would be my hope, and I would support the resolution at 8D2.
Second.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I didn't make the motion, I just said I would support it.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
8D3. I made the motion, yes.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
8D4.
Second.
Could you give us, explain what 8D4 does legally?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this, again, just calling for arguments to be made for and against these particular charter amendments.
And how would that proceed?
We put out a notice, and it's obviously, obviously, that the action is taken tonight, and then people have a date certain. What's the date, Lucy? January 7th, to present those arguments?
Okay.
And then, and then we...
What if you get 20 arguments for and 20 against? What do you do?
Comes back to the council, Lucy? If we get multiple, more than three people to...
The resolution requires that they submit their desire to write the arguments by January 7th. Once the, once we've acquired a list, we would bring that back to the city council. And based on the Glendale municipal code that establishes a hierarchy, we will bring that to council and then...
What is the hierarchy?
I believe it's the elected officials are first, recognized organizations are second, and then individuals are, officers of the city elected by the people are first, appointed offices, officers of the city second, bona fide associations of citizens, and then individual voters.
Excuse me, but after that decision made, in other words, we don't see what the argument is going to be. We're just approving the person.
Correct, it's the argument.
That's correct. And then there's a new date that's established, and they have that date by which to submit the arguments to the city clerk.
Is there any comment made on the arguments? Can anything...
There's a rebuttal as well to...
Aside from a rebuttal, is there any fact-checking or any...
Yeah, there's, well, there's a little bit more discretion with the arguments. I mean, there has to be really egregious, something has to be really egregious for there to be a challenge to it, because it is argument. The impartial analysis, that is subject to a more objective standard, and so that's our office, you know, we prepare that, and it's, you know, obviously, it's...
I mean, the argument against the transfer is illegal. Glendale has been, we hear it every...
I, I, I think...
Is that something that permitted to stand?
Yeah, I think so. I think the arguments that Mr. Zavos has made, I, yeah, and it has to be something that, I think his arguments, like I said, some of them, you know, they have some basis in the charter, and I think, unless there's actually... And I think unless there's actually egregious factual error, you wouldn't be able to challenge it or say, no, I can't go.
He worded it egregious, not just.
Right, right.
As opposed to opinion.
Right.
And that's what, you know, his opinion will be, I think, will be sufficient for an argument in a ballot.
Okay, we had a motion by Mr. Weaver. We need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members.
This is for item four, right?
Yes.
Right.
Yes. Council members Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next.
He is Director of Public Works regarding public sale of surplus city-owned properties located at 765 and 749 Glenmore Boulevard and 1644, 1648 and 1652 Gladys Drive. E1 is an ordinance for introduction.
I think we pretty well.
We've been here and done this for quite some time. With respect to these properties, if you have any questions, Mr. Zern, Mr. Garcia can address.
Are we taking steps to protect the city at this point from future?
That's a good question, Steve. Engineering-wise, certainly.
Engineering, legal-wise, for selling the properties.
Correct. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Manukian, we've already taken quite a few measures on our, on our, from the city's perspective.
Not, not in terms of securing the hillsides, but in terms of legal.
I'll defer to Mr.
Legal grounds to protect us.
I, it's.
If we're going to sell it and get sued again, I'd rather not sell it.
It's, it is an asset sale. We're, you know, we're being released from any liability. It's, there are certain, the parcels are being tied together so that they, it can't be overdeveloped. It'll be less developed than what would actually be allowed by code. So those, there are protections in there to make sure that's, uh, the same issues in the future.
Mayor, I'll be glad to introduce the ordinance at 8D1.
The ordinance has been introduced. Now that I think about it, this will be an excellent motocross hill climbing.
It's a little, a little bit steep. A bit steep.
Okay, next please.
I'll have to pull up the bike with a rope.
We return to oral communication. Discussion is limited. Item is not part of this. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And the city manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation or report.
Mr. Mayor, per our agreement.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Weaver.
I have something to take care of.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Beraj Gregorian, followed by Chris McReynolds.
Good evening. My name is Beraj Gregorian, 3820 Honolulu. Honorable member, mayor, and members of city council. It has been a pleasure to serve as a member of City of Glendale Civil Service Commission, and I thank you for all allowing me to, unfortunately, to be on this commission. I have put, I have put my heart and soul into serving the Civil Service Commission as well as the Glendale Water Empower Commission in the past. I take great pride in living in this wonderful city and contributing all I can do to the community. At this time, due to business obligations, regrettably, I have resigned from my position on the Civil Service Commission effectively immediately. Thank you again for affording me the opportunity to serve my commi, community. Thank you. On a personal note, I would like to send my sincere thanks to Mr. Weaver, Councilman Weaver, for his appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregorian. You've served for a long time. Thank you very much.
I know we come in at the end, but if you don't mind, I just wanted to thank Mr. Gregorian for his service as well.
Chris McReynolds, followed by Stephanie McReynolds.
Now I know why you look familiar.
Yeah, that's right. Good evening.
Yes, right.
I'm generally one of the bigger guys that comes into the room, but after hearing you grapple with hundreds of millions of dollars, all of a sudden I'm feeling a little bit puny. But I want to thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Chris McReynolds and my family has had a long history residing in and contributing to the Glendale area. My grandparents settled in a home on Montrose Avenue in 1923 and my family has resided in Montrose and La Crisena ever since. Next year, we will celebrate 90 years as part of this community. My wife Stephanie and I have founded and operated Montrose Christian Montessori School in 1985 until we retired from it in 2010. We have been active in various youth sports programs for over 25 years and I served as president of the Crisina Valley Chamber in 1987. This area is our home and I am proud to speak of living here. I was also happy to hear that the city of Glendale recently was recognized for being a business-friendly environment, especially since we are now attempting to start up a brand-new business. I want to bring before you, however, a challenging issue we have been dealing with in regard to whether our new planned restaurant, Straw Hat Pizza, is to be required to undergo a parking reduction process as part of our conditional use permit application. This requirement, which we feel is unwarranted, is based upon whether our restaurant should be classified as a full-service or fast-food establishment. In speaking with the president of Straw Hat, Mr. Alan Streggi, I was informed that without exception, every Straw Hat restaurant in the United States has been classified as a full-service restaurant. And there are over 50 Straw Hat establishments in seven states at this time. This makes sense since upon entering Straw Hat Pizza, one can easily see that an extended meal time is very likely. In fact, a main reason for even going to a Straw Hat Pizza in the first place is to gather with other families for a casual and lengthy time of enjoying good food and good company. Since the prior tenant of the building, Yourar Two Restaurant, was licensed to operate a full-service restaurant, this would seem to be good news for us. Unfortunately, it is not such good news as Glendale's planning department has determined that we should be categorized as a fast-food establishment solely due to the fact that we ask customers to order at a counter before taking their seats. This decision, which is the first time in the United States that Straw Hat Pizza has received such a classification, has placed us in the uncomfortable position of either A, going through a lengthy and extensive, expensive process during which we could not perform any construction or even submit plans for permits, or B, determining to open as a full-service restaurant as defined by the city of Glendale, which would cost us thousands of dollars per year in increased payroll costs. To put it another way, taking customer orders at a counter before being seated normally throws a restaurant into the fast-food category. However, in our case, we operate like a full-service restaurant in virtually every other area. We take food to the tables, check on customers, refill drinks, clean up after customers, et cetera. If in the city's eyes, we could be classified as a full-service restaurant, yet still take food orders at the counter, we could avoid a parking reduction request, get started building right away, and then operate the way our franchise model dictates. Therefore, I would ask you to consider directing the planning staff to treat our new restaurant as a full-service establishment, yet allowing us to take customer orders at the counter before taking their seats. I ask for this consideration even if that falls ever so slightly outside of the city's narrow code for such a classification. Please understand that I do not believe myself to be asking anything of you that is improper or even extraordinary in nature. I assumed from the beginning, perhaps to my detriment, that we would receive full-service status and that our parking status would be grandfathered since we would be opening the same type of establishment as our predecessor. After all, we commonly perform 90% of the same services that, that other full-service restaurants offer. To the credit of the planning department personnel, they have been especially kind to us and there has been no shortage of department members telling us that they are sorry about this. It isn't fair. The code should be modified to accommodate our particular situation and that many in the department personally were on our side. However, since the code failed to adequately address a newer, family casual restaurant concept such as ours, they had no choice but to follow the letter of the law with respect to us. As a result, we are in real danger of not being able to finish what we have started since we have been relying on our savings as we have worked toward opening this restaurant for the past two years now. We have, we have an SBA loan in place, an architect with plans to submit, a contractor ready to work, but no ability to begin anything until our parking issue is resolved. I do want to tell you that I have filed a conditional use application addressing beer and wine as well as an arcade, but the parking issue is really troubling me. In a business-friendly, award-winning community like Glendale, it seems like we should be able to work this out for the benefit of all parties, the city, our family, and our customers. I'd like to have my wife kind of continue and fill in some of the blanks from this point on. Thank you.
Stephanie McReynolds.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing it from us. We are the little guys and we really want to be Glendale-friendly. Both of us were born here in Glendale, have done all of our business in Glendale, and feel that we have something to offer to the Glendale community. As you might know, as a longtime Glendale resident, that Straw Hat Pizza, we used to have two Straw Hat pizzas in our area, open and operating. The last one to close was on Brand Boulevard while the other store was located next to Radio Shack in Montrose. In late, in the late 1980s, Pizza Hut, in an attempt to eliminate their competition, bought Straw Hat Pizza and immediately began closing down their restaurants. Except for a few franchisees in Northern California, the chain was effectively subdued and not heard from again until these same franchise owners decided to band together and bring the brand back to life. Before Straw Hat and Montrose closed, we were pretty lucky up in the Crescent Valley. We boasted no less than five pizza parlors where customers could sit down with their families, enjoy good food and entertainment while playing games during their time together. In addition to Straw Hat, we had Shaky's, a Pizza Hut, two roundtables. Sadly, only Roundtable and La Crisena remains. And it's much too small to accommodate everyone from the Crisina Valley who would like to have a casual night out with family. The good news is that the old Shaky's building, located at 3463 Foothill Boulevard in La Crisena, has become available. After quite a bit of research, we decided to invest in Straw Hat franchise with the intention of bringing a pizza restaurant back to our hometown. The location is perfect. It was for Shaky's, which operated at the site from 1963 until the mid 1990s. Our idea is to offer a lunch buffet, dinner with beer and wine selections, a video arcade, HGTVs virtually everywhere, you look, and a party room for birthdays, team events, and organizational meetings. The Straw Hat unit will be the largest in the chain, putting us in a position to become the training center for the entire franchise somewhere down the road. As former teachers, we welcome that opportunity. However, as we mentioned, we're in real danger of losing our window of opportunity. There's this parking issue, there's the full-service issue. And of course, what we want to make sure that we do is honor Glendale with a community business that will, in fact, provide our community with the services much needed. And up on the hill, we don't have a family restaurant. We don't have a place for community to gather. We feel that that's a need that really needs to be met. And so we've decided tonight to appeal to the city council in hopes that not only was this a business planning issue, but this was an issue that would meet the needs of the people of Glendale. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We respond after the oral communications portion. Valdemar Lorac, followed by Herbert Malan.
Good evening. My name is Valdemar Lorac. I live in Glendale since 1988. That means for 24 years. Now I own condos on Salem Street and where I live, we have 10 units. Two-bedroom condos have two parking spaces. Three-bedroom condos have three parking spaces. It's still not enough. We have to, some of us have to park on the streets. It's really problems on the streets to park. But city wants to allow to build a building on our street, on Salem Street, close to Central. High-density building, 44 units with only 59 parking spaces, which is 1.3 space per unit, which is also against municipal code, which should be 75 parking spaces, which still not going to be enough for this area. Also, 500 feet from that proposed building, it's got, city is proposing another building on Orange and Wilson, when it's 166 units and only 210 spaces for parking, which is 1.3 units per, I mean, spaces for a unit. Across the street, city is allowing to build another building with 243 units and 390 parking spaces. So I'm asking, where are we supposed to park? Where all of this area, most of the parkings now, we have to pay for it. We live in the city. We, we pay taxes here. We own the houses. I know you guys don't, if you go to your houses, you don't pay for the parking. Why we have to pay for, for the parking? City is just building houses and houses and houses and it's not enough parking spaces for it. So not even enough parking spaces, the city is even letting build houses with not enough participation to the municipal code, which you install. And now you want to go against it and you want us community to allow to do it. So we ask you to maybe look at it and maybe do something about it. You just show us a beautiful video of the city. But if we're going to try to bring tourists here, where they supposed to park? When we residents, we will have to park in the areas where it's supposed to be for tourists because it's not enough areas for us. So before we ask tourists to come here, it would be nice if we have some working, some more parking space for the residents first. So I would like council to look at it and help us with this.
Okay, we respond after all of the speakers speak.
Can I ask a question though of the speaker? Do you mind if I?
Yeah.
I have a question for you, sir. First, thanks for coming. You said that in your building, the two-bedroom units have two parking spaces and the three-bedroom units have three parking spaces.
Yes, in my.
I'm just curious, and I don't know if you can answer this. I'm curious as to why that's not enough and how many parking spaces you think a two-bedroom should, should have to have.
I would say that two and three is enough, but should be also guest parkings.
Your building has no guest parking. Is that a problem?
It's just three, but not always is enough. For example, we have Thanksgiving, so we have people coming or some holidays or weekends. So maybe it's not enough and some of our friends have to park on the streets. There's not enough space. There's not enough parking on the streets. We have to go and park in Galleria.
So the problem is the guest parking at holidays when you've got a lot of people coming to the buildings?
No, it's also to the economy. Not everybody is maybe working. So people are leaving, there's more people leaving the houses. So if you have three-bedroom house, you usually have parents and the kids. Some of the kids are older kids, so they have another car. Some of the families we have, they have in-laws living with them because of the situation now, economic situation. So not for everybody. For me and my wife, it's okay. It's me, my wife, we have two bedroom, we have little kid. So we have two parking spaces. It's enough for us. But for other families, it's not enough. I'm not maybe asking for more than we have, but not building houses when there's, when you're cutting the spaces. That's the big problem. And when you build, for example, on.
Okay, so, okay. I think we got it. Thanks.
You're aware, you're aware that this project is for veterans, right? The 44.
It's not for veterans.
Yeah, the 44-unit project on Salem is for.
It's called veterans. It's for the low-income people. It's not.
No, it's for veterans. It's for veterans who served in the American Armed Forces.
I went to hearing on Wednesday.
Okay, that's good enough.
And the person who was going to build the stuff, they said the veterans of the armed forces, they're going to have.
Priority?
Priority. That's what he said.
It's for veterans of the armed forces and it'll be, it'll be filled.
No, it doesn't mean that the armed forces.
I will respond after the, okay, Herbert Malan.
American terror members of the city council and staff. When I served in Vietnam, supposedly to protect this country and the values that it has, never did I imagine that government work like this. Lack of transparency, obstinate, you don't listen to the public. You take procedures and actions that are arbitrary. And I can tell you that the two issues that were brought before you just now, those last two, are representative of the way the city works. In the past few months, I was looking at a property to establish a restaurant. We began doing all the calculations. You know, we can calculate all of the cost of the restaurant, the internal improvements, look at the code, but I was told, you know, keep it quiet. Don't let anybody know that it is you. Because there are arbitrary situations where if it is you, then it's going to be different. If it is you, there's going to be different types of inspections. In other words, I could calculate and forecast what my expenses were, except for one, whether the city would take arbitrary action against me. The issue with regard to apartments, I've been bringing up for years, concerning the overbuilding that takes place and the lack of additional parking spaces that are needed for guests and other individuals that come and live in the, in the area. We have it nearby. On Kenwood Street, on, on street cleaning day, the residents have to come in and park at the Glendale Unified School district parking lot. Even though the streets are not clean because I want to clean it myself. And even though the, the police comes by to basically ticket those individuals. This is, you know, just basic quality of life issues. I brought up issues concerning the lack of parkland. And it seems like all of you give yourselves the authority to be able to, or the prerogative, to be able to mislead, to be able to twist the information to whatever it is that you want to present to the public, and you do it continually. You did it today. You know, we bring an issue that has to do with three variables and you choose only one to discuss. It's like if you never took any math. You took algebra. This is incredible. Look, you, you lie with impunity. You lie concerning issues having to do with Proposition 13. And I came back here and proved to you that when inflation was 335% in the last, since 1978, your income stream from, from property tax revenues went up 1,100%. Properties change, they are sold, people die, and, and the properties are reappraised. But yet you use that as, as your, as an excuse for why your budget is under deficit without taking a look at the turn of your expenses. taking a look at the turn of your expenses. The, you create an incredible number of additional housing units, where at the same time, we are significantly deficient in the infrastructure for water and electricity. You ask the public, conserve water, and you build 2,000 or 3,000 more units. How does that make sense? You have 200 to 300 million dollars in terms of water infrastructure repair, but yet you still approve thousands of units more. How is that prudent? You bring in thousands of additional residents in areas where you are significantly deficient in parkland, but then you say, well, we have to do some drastic and draconian things with people who are in apartments to basically move them out. And then later on, I see acres, two acres, three acres of land south of the 134 freeway, but they're not used for parkland. What I see consistent in not just the Glendale government, but practically all governments in California, it truly is, there's a lack of transparency. There is a disrespect for the general public. There are no measures concerning our quality of life, and when we ask for it, we are berated for asking for it. This is incredibly bad government, no matter how you turn it. You promise things when you run for office, and once you come into office, you turn like a petty dictator from another, you know, third-world country. You do it consistently. You know, you come in and invite a religious leader to sort of give you an invocation and sort of give you a blessing for the things that you're going to do wrong the following. You do it whenever there's a budget. The budget is incredibly unfair. The budget diverts significant amount, hundreds of millions of dollars of taxpayer money, to police, fire, and management. And we are significantly deficient in our infrastructure. We're significantly deficient in after-school programs. We increase the rates for electricity, we increase the rates for water. I never imagined that as a Vietnam veteran, someday I would be standing before government and thinking, my God, this stinks. This is horrifically bad government. Thank you.
Okay, to the issue, there are thousands of veterans that need housing here in Southern California. So the idea that we're not going to fill 44 units with American Armed Forces veterans, my friend, they're going to be filled with veterans. Not all of them, unfortunately, are even going to have cars. Some of them are going to be dependent on public transportation. So I think the parking is adequate. No, there's no interchange. You can come back next week if you want and speak for five minutes at oral communications. Hey, Officer, have a seat. You can come back next week if you want to speak another five minutes. Yes, Mr. Higginson.
With regard to the issue with, on the pizza place, that the question was raised.
On this particular issue, do you have?
On this particular issue, this is, the hearing was heard by a hearing officer, and if anybody is unhappy with the hearing officer's decision, they have the means to appeal the decision to the Planning Commission and further on to the city council. That would be the proper procedure to follow.
Okay, Mr. Manukin.
Well, I wanted to address, Mr. and Mrs. McReynolds, welcome to the council. My daughter graduated from MCMS. She still talks about her teachers and her experience over there, and she still uses the lessons she learned at MCMS in her college. So I forwarded your email to the city manager. What is, what can we do at this point? I know sometimes the ordinances are kind of.
It's a bit adequate.
They are, but there's always gray areas, and in situations like this, we should be able to do something to get these individuals who are investing their savings into a business, which I think will be fairly successful.
Certainly.
To help them out.
The problem that we have is that.
Not even help them out? I don't want to help them out.
No, 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 but.
I want to allow them to.
Facilitate their investment.
As is planned.
Certainly. The problem that we have, that Mr. and Mrs. McReynolds are coming across, is that the code is painfully clear about what is and what is not considered fast food versus full service. The right solution is to fix the code, because every pizza parlor in the world that I've ever been into operates the way that they've described. You go to the counter, you place your order, then you go down, sit and eat. The problem is that our code, as I say, is very clear about, if you were to go into Del Taco, for example, you go to the counter, you place your order, then you stand there and wait, and your number comes up, and that is, I think, most people would consider fast food. But we have to figure the, an objective, fair way.
But this is more than just placing an order. There are also servers that go out, and so it's not exactly the way you described it. There's more to it than.
Correct. That's what differentiates it from a Del Taco. No disrespect to the Del Taco folks, but that is different. Our code doesn't speak to that, however. As I say, our code is very antiseptic about.
So is that a gray area where we can classify?
It's not. And so what we have.
I think if you want to, it will be a gray area. We just don't want to do it.
If.
They're discriminating against you, Mr. and Mrs. McReynolds.
What we want to do is come back to council with a fix, a real fix.
But what are they going to do? In the meantime, they're sitting and waiting.
Well, how quickly can we, can we look at options for changing the code for this kind of?
If I may, Mr. City Manager and members of the city council, the code that is in front of you, and the definitions in the zoning code for fast-food restaurant were adopted by the city council after years that the definition of fast, of full-service restaurant failed to meet the parking standards of the city. This city council, or the previous city councils, over the last 10, 15 years, added additional types of restaurants because of the parking demand that was created by various types of restaurants, and the demand that the citizens of this city put on the city council to address the parking situation. If the city council would like to direct the city, the planning staff, to bring in an initiation to change the parking standards for certain types of what is considered fast-food restaurant at this moment, we would be happy to do that. But I will defend the position of the city, of the planning staff, full-heartedly, that they are only enforcing the zoning code that you have adopted, and there's no personal feeling, no viewpoint on part of the staff about this particular pizza place or any other particular pizza place. We're not willy-nilly deciding that this is a fast-food restaurant. This is, there's no gray area in this. This is defined in the zoning code. And the proper way to address this is a parking reduction permit. If the applicant finds that there is, the corporate office has data that shows this operates more like a full-service restaurant, all they need to do is present that, and the parking reduction permit is granted. And.
It costs.
Well, it costs the parking reduction permit.
What is it? I'm asking.
It's about $3,000.
Only?
However, it's the code that you have adopted. It's not a code that we are coming up with.
Let me ask this. Not to get into a discussion about this. I don't know this restaurant. I don't know Straw Hat Pizza. I'm hoping the pizza's good, because we can always use good pizza.
Great, great.
But the way they describe it, it sounds like it really is a restaurant where people sit down, and that it doesn't have the kind of turnover that a fast-food restaurant has. So I guess my question is, they could apply for a parking reduction, and maybe that can be expedited, so it can be done quick. I don't know how long it takes. I don't know if they have to go in front of the Planning Commissioner, if it can be done over the counter. And maybe, I assume they know, but I don't know.
It's a hearing officer.
Hearing officer, okay. So, but I guess my question is, if we think that there's going to be, this is a model of restaurant that's becoming more common, that is going to be causing more problems over time, maybe it is something that we should look at in terms of the code. That's my only, that's my question about asking you.
I don't think it's a, it's a common issue that is happening. I mean, Straw Hats have been around for a long time. It's similar to Pizza Hut, basically.
It's a pizza parlor.
Right. And it's not a fast-food restaurant. I don't consider it a fast-food restaurant, because there are servers who come out and serve the people who are sitting there for other needs. They, yes, they go pick up the pizza from when they order it. But there are also servers, waitresses and waiters, who wait on the people who are sitting. And my question is, before he got kind of upset, I don't know why, but my question is, a fast-food restaurant is clear, you know, McDonald's or Del Taco, you go get your food and sit down, eat, and leave. But this certainly is not a fast-food restaurant.
Right, I agree.
So why can't it be classified as a restaurant, as a full-service restaurant?
Simply because of the way it's defined in the code. So we are, we will find a solution.
So we have, we have in the code saying that if you pick up your food, there's no ifs or buts about it. It's a fast.
You order at the counter.
Yeah.
But now, there's a new category from an investment viewpoint.
If I may, we're just starting to get into discussion a little bit. I just want to ask the council to either give staff direction, to bring something back.
I just want to clarify what the code is.
We should probably, I mean, we should probably read it. I mean, it is pretty clear, but it's basically, anytime food is ordered at the counter, that's characterized.
There is now, there's a new category of restaurant called casual dining. That's where you order the food, but you go back and you're served. It's called casual dining.
Also like quick serve or.
Come up with, you can come up with a new.
Mike from.
Because I do think there is a, there is a need to find a solution to this. But it's a lasting solution for everybody, not just, I think what Mr. Higginson was referring to, was this isn't a matter of subjectivity from the planning staff. It's very clear. And so maybe we need to adjust the code.
Well, certainly, the couple who came here, I think, were pretty clear that they didn't feel that they were being discriminated against, or that there was anything arbitrary going. They understand that this is something in the code.
And I didn't mean it that way.
You were being facetious, I know.
Mr. Najarian, you had a call.
Give us a little smirk or something when you say, because I thought you were dead serious, and I was. I am in full support of having this come back, along with some of the, from what I'm hearing from the planning director, is that there were some particular issues that the council listened to, and the council decided that this manner of restaurant where you order at the counter and then go created parking issues. If you could bring back some of that to us, as well as let us know when that was passed. It may have been some of us on the council a short while ago that voted to make that zoning definition the way it is. And then, I think, when we have that information, we could decide what we want to do, to modify it, change it.
Mr. Higginson.
We would be happy to do that. And I might just.
What are the options for them at this point?
At this moment, unfortunately, the only option for them is the parking reduction permit procedure. And let me also say the options that the planning staff has provided before, which was the definition of change of use up to 5,000 square feet. We have brought several versions of that. Finally, you adopted the change of use for up to 5,000 square feet within the downtown area. We have not been able to get the support you would need from the residents to expand that outside the downtown area for changes of use, so that not everything would be considered an intensification of use. That would be the simplest way to approach something like this. However, if you'd like to specifically address specific types of restaurants, we'd be more than happy to bring back to council and the planning commission to reconsider.
When you do that, maybe you could also bring back some data about the type of turnover this type of restaurant has compared to a traditional fast-food or a traditional sit-down restaurant, because that's going to be key in this discussion.
Of course, that would be always part of that.
Maybe you can get some of the data about Straw Hat particularly.
And we would, we could, we could ask that right now, actually, from them, to review.
Could I, could I get the code section where it specifies what a fast-food restaurant is? But I want to take a look at that.
Do I have a motion?
Well, other than that, actually, I was just a general comment. I was looking over the budget document today, and I thought that was very well done, much more understandable than in the prior years. Yeah, all the captions were very clear as to what it's representing and how it was presented, and all the statements. In general, the budget does not present comparable years. It usually comes in the CAFRA, right? So it did have the prior year numbers, and I just thought that it was very straightforward. I liked the way it was presented. I didn't go over the numbers with it. I just looked at the formatting of it, and it was very good, so.
There you go.
I have a motion to adjourn.
I'm not.
Or adjourn.